Test, test. Hello, everyone. Thank you for joining the Board of Certification for this morning's Town Hall Discussion. My name is Kelly Wilkins and with me today I have Denise Van Duhm. She will help answer your questions about evidence-based practice. During our next hour, we will address many of the burning questions you shared upon registration for this event. After this discussion, you are welcome to send additional inquiries to us at CE@BOCATC.org and a BOC team member will personally assist you. As a note, CEUs are not awarded for attending this conference call. Initially, we're going to start with a little bit of background about EVP. Many athletic trainers are asking, what is evidence-based practice? What is the new evidence-based practice continuing education requirement? And why is EVP now required?
Hi, everyone. This is Denise Van, I'm the Executive Director of the Board of Certification. So let's talk about evidence-based practice. It is the combination of your clinical expertise as a healthcare provider, your patient's values, and the best research evidence available when making your decisions for your patient. So the BOC added this category to ensure that all ATs focus a part of their continuing education on this important area. EVP is not new in healthcare, but it is for some ATs. EVP has been included in the education of new graduates over the past five years. However, many ATs who have been certified for a period of time have not had education in these principles. By combining the use of the best available research evidence with the needs of your patient and then your clinical expertise, EVP assists you in providing the best patient care possible. The requirement is part of a longer-term process where providers, beginning in 2016, are required to infuse evidence in all their programming. And as a result, the need for this requirement may not be necessary in the near future. The new EVP category requires all ATs to complete a minimum number of BOC-approved EVP CEUs with each certification maintenance period. So by the end of December 31st this year, 2015, ATs who had 50 CEUs due must complete at least, the minimum of 10 EVP CEUs, and ATs with 25 CEUs due must complete at least five EVP CEUs. There are many ways to meet the requirement, and those can be found on the front page of our BOC website. So now that you have some background information, let's answer your questions. So our first question.
All right. Our first question is, as a high school athletic trainer, what are the advantages of using EVP in my practice?
Well, EVP is important for every AT. So by incorporating EVP into the CE requirements, we hope to bring EVP into your clinical practice. As an athletic trainer in any setting, it should be the goal to ensure great patient outcomes. Healthcare changes every day and in every setting, so all ATs need to be informed of new evidence to enhance your patient care.
Our next question is, why was notification about EVP late and we still need 10 hours?
Well, the EBPCU requirement, we announced that for the first time in the winter 2012 certification update, along with the two-year 50 CEU reporting period change. So that was before the end of the previous CEU reporting period. Since the 2012 announcement, we've regularly used email, social media, our website, and all of our print and electronic publications and in-person meetings to talk about the requirement. So perhaps the late notification is referencing the letter that we sent to every AT last November. That letter wasn't our first announcement, but we know that ATs are busy and not everybody reads all the emails that we send or necessarily has time to read certification update. So we sent the letter to hopefully get those busy ATs' attention. Considering the volume of calls and the emails that we received after it was sent, we think it was a very good idea. So in terms of being late, it might just be when it first came to your attention. So please log into BOC Central and be sure you have a preferred email and physical address in your profile for important communications regarding your credential from the BOC.
Our next question is, are there EBPCUs offered as part of our yearly NATA membership fees? What can be done to offer more EBPCU opportunities that can be purchased with CEU bucks? And why does the NATA not allow us to use all of our CEU bucks for EVP courses?
Okay, so this is actually like four different questions. So for this individual, let's take them one at a time. The NATA, you know, and I don't want to speak for the NATA, but in our communication and our work with them, they do offer members 10 CEU bucks in their quiz center with a new or renewed membership. So the NATA does allow you to use a portion of your CEU bucks on some of their EVP CEU courses. And in our discussions with the NATA, they do understand the need for more EBPCUs in their quiz center, and they've added CEU courses throughout the year. So I know they've recently added some. They've had a live webinar on EVP, so they're constantly adding new courses. On our BOC board call Wednesday night, we were informed the NATA will offer live EVP programming at the 2016 Annual Convention in Baltimore, and they're currently working out those details. So for those of you that are members, please stay in tune with the NATA information about the upcoming convention. But if you have more specific questions about your CEU bucks program, that really is an NATA membership question. And so we encourage you to call the NATA Membership Department with those specific questions.
Our next question is, is the clinical EVP application process going to be simplified?
Yes, absolutely. You know, this was our first implementation of the EVP requirement, and we've had a group of subject matter experts that have helped us form the application. But what we're currently in the process of doing is streamlining that application, and it is going to also be online starting in 2016. So the goal of the application will be the same, but we do anticipate changes regarding question format, wording, and explanations to help folks who are applying. Also, as I mentioned, it will be put online in the near future.
I would like to add that if you do have questions while filling out an EVP application, whether it be clinical or foundational, don't hesitate to call the BOC office, and we will help you through the process of filling out your application. The next question we have is, why do home study courses with textbooks and an actual graded test not count towards EBPCUs?
Well, EVP incorporates the most current evidence about a topic, and generally, you're going to find that in journals. Textbooks become outdated quickly during their printing and publication process. And so at this point, textbooks are not included in the ways that people can use the EVP credits.
Our next question is, why are there not any EVP courses on nutrition? Many of us practice in different settings, for example, as a health and wellness coach. Why aren't there any wellness-related EVP courses?
Well, one of our approved providers, Home CEU Connections, currently has a course titled Nutrition for Endurance Athletes, and it's an online, on-demand course. There have been a limited number of nutrition topics. However, there have been programs that have included topics like female athlete triad, supplements, and nutrition in the high school setting. So each provider can determine their EVP topics. The BOC doesn't require them to have a specific topic, so they give courses that they think will be beneficial to their audiences. But we will share your interest in nutrition-related EVP courses with our providers, our provider network. So thank you for that suggestion, and we will pass that on. And hopefully, the providers that you normally use for your interest in nutrition and wellness, if you can encourage them to consider being an approved provider or to contact the BOC office about how to become an approved provider, then we will work with them to have them understand our requirements and hopefully get them into the network that's available for you as a, for BOC-approved CE.
Our next question is, will there be more EVP courses available before the end of the year? The choices are still limited and do not necessarily meet my needs.
That's a question we hear pretty often, and what we need to make sure everybody understands is that we are continuing to receive applications for new EVP programs on a daily basis. And we anticipate this trend to continue through the end of the year. So each month, so you understand the process, the BOC has three conference calls to approve new courses. And the approved EVP courses are added to the listing of approved EVP courses on our website. And you can access that on our website, and if you click on the Blue ATs tab on our website, and then click on Maintain Certification, if you scroll down a little bit in the right corner of the page, you'll see a hyperlink for EBPCUs. If you click that hyperlink, a listing of all the currently available EBPCUs, live and on-demand, are available there. And so that changes on a regular basis. If we just look at the courses that we approved this month, in August, we added 30 courses, and currently, there are over 193 courses available. Now, we know not all the courses are necessarily going to meet your learning needs, and we're working to let our approved providers know what those needs are. So if you have a specific need that we can share with providers, please send us an email at CE@BOCATC.org, and we will forward that to providers to have them understand what the demand is from our AT population.
Our next question is, why is the application for EVP approval not user-friendly for academic credit courses? And why does the EVP academic courses approved by universities have to go through BOC approval as well?
That's a good question. Our Standards Committee discussed allowing EVP post-certification coursework to count in the EVP category without going through the current application process. It was determined by consensus from the Standards Committee that there isn't one set of standards that's used by all colleges and universities when they develop their EVP courses. So at this time, that's why academic courses for EVP have to go through our approval process.
Our next question is, EVP is a very broad concept. Is there a system being developed to make it easier for us to know the type? For example, does the program use new research versus meta-analysis?
Well, hopefully, the new standards that go into effect January 1 of 2016, requiring providers to supply the description of the program and the objectives for it, will help answer some of your questions when you're looking at courses. And you can get those questions answered before you attend the course. We'll take this question back to the staff and our EVP committee. So thank you for that, and we'll work more on ways that we can get that information out from the providers to you as a consumer of their EVP and approved BOC CE offerings.
Our next question is, why do we have to do 10 extra EBPCUs? That is very expensive.
So I think there's an implication in the question that we've added to the CE requirement. Maybe that's just me, but you know, we, ATs have to do a minimum of 50 CEUs, and 10 of those have to be in the EVP category. So many EBPCUs are similar in price to a Category A CEU, but each provider is allowed to establish their CEU pricing. Some providers offer free courses, others as low as $2 to $4 per CEU. So again, to fulfill your requirement, just make sure that at least 10 of your EBPCUs, of the 10 of your 50 CEUs are in the EVP category, and that's a minimum. So if you have 50 CEUs that are all EVP, that's fine.
Our next questions are, would it be better to make all CEUs meet EVP requirements? What makes EVP so special that it needs to be in a separate category? And why is there a separate EVP category when the current emphasis in most courses we take are on the current evidence?
Starting in 2016, all providers will have to meet standards similar to EVP courses, and we hope to increase the level of education being offered by all providers. So this requirement for this reporting period and having it carved out as a specific minimum requirement is part of a longer-term process where providers are required to infuse evidence into all their programming. So as said earlier, as a result, the need for this specific minimum category may not be necessary in the future. And as I said before, you know, you can earn more than 10 EBPCUs. But I think it kind of goes into our next question. It kind of overlapped. And that one was, why was CEU added? So when the Board added this category, it was to ensure that all ATs focus a part of their continuing education on this important area. And EVP is not new in healthcare, but it is new for some ATs. EVP has been included in the education of new graduates over the past five years, but as we said earlier, many ATs have not been exposed to the principles of EVP. And so that's one of the reasons that the Board instituted this requirement. As I said, it's part of a longer-term process, and as a result, we'll be evaluating this next year. And as we move towards the 2018 CE requirements, you may see some changes.
Our next question is, why does it cost to have an EVP application reviewed?
Well, the EVP application does have a cost to be reviewed, and the cost is based off of the amount of CEUs offered, and it's used to supplement the review process and allow for serious application inquiries only.
Our next question is, how can the quizzes at the end of an EVP program be better used? If the goal is to improve practice, then shouldn't the quiz be practice-focused and not regurgitation?
I've heard this question a few times. First, want to clarify that quizzes aren't required by the BOC for live programs. The providers are required to have measurable learning objectives within their program, but it's up to the providers to determine how those objectives are measured by offering a variety of assessment methods. So if a provider uses a quiz, it's their determination that that's a tool to measure the learning from their program.
Another question to kind of go along about the test questions at the end of an EVP course. Why are there so many EVP test questions, statistical and not medical injury care related?
So if the course was a foundation course, this would make sense. But it's important to remember that the assessment is developed by the provider, and concerns about a specific course should be discussed with them. So not knowing whether this was a clinical EVP course that is being referenced or a foundations course, it's kind of tough to answer that. But the choice of the assessment is that of the provider, not the BOC. We just make sure that there's some sort of an assessment. And as I said, it doesn't have to be a quiz. We don't require that.
Our next question is, most of the EVP programs are limited in content and very expensive. Examples are registration, travel, hotels, meals, and et cetera. Why can't the BOC make this requirement free?
The BOC doesn't set pricing for EVP courses. Since they come from providers, and we don't supply continuing education activities, we don't have control over that. The BOC approves the providers, and we do always look for low-cost ways for ATs to obtain their CE, including your EBPCUs. And we publish those on our website at www.BOCATC.org under the CE Resources tab, when you click on the Find a BOC Approved Provider. And so that allows you to actually look at courses and look at your price range, and you can determine a course that fits the way you learn and by price. Currently, AT Still, as an example, has a course for a total of five EBPCUs, and that's free on their website.
Yeah, I would like to say that it is three separate courses for a total of five CEUs. So if it's something you want to try one and see if it's a good fit for you, that would be a good starting point as well. Our next question is, why is there now a two-year reporting period instead of the previous three-year period?
Well, the two-year reporting cycle was instituted to be consistent with state regulatory requirements, which are most commonly two years. And that was a result of discussions that we had with you through a large survey that started back in 2010.
Our next question is, how is the number of 10 determined for EBPCUs?
The profession has been behind in requiring evidence-based programming, and because it was so critical to patient safety, the Board, after a lot of discussion, decided that 20% or 10 CEs was needed as a minimum requirement. So it came out of that survey that we instituted in 2010, discussions with our physician direction folks, our public members. And so the Board decided on the 20% or 10 EBPCUs for this reporting period.
Our next question is, may an AT attempt to test out of an EVP course?
At this time, there's no way to test out of a course. The AT has to complete the course in order to obtain credit.
What are the BOC's involvement and strategies for athletic trainers to incorporate evidence-based practice into everyday practice?
Well, by incorporating EVP courses into our requirements, our CE requirements, we hope that it brings EVP into clinical practice through that requirement. The new 2016 standards that we've mentioned earlier that our providers will have to meet will also help infuse evidence in your continuing education programming, and hopefully, that will incorporate current evidence into your clinical decision-making to improve your patient care.
Will there be changes in how EBPCUs are reported by certified athletic trainers? Like the number of CEUs, will it be a different category and et cetera?
I'm assuming this is referring to the reporting period that starts next January, the 2016-2017 reporting period. The requirements to maintain your certification during the next reporting period will have very few changes from the current reporting period.
Our next question is, why is it difficult to get presentations approved for EVP?
Most of the difficulties that we hear about difficulties getting presentations approved is when a person is trying to gather the information, the program information, to complete the application. But perhaps they were not involved in the development of the EVP programs. So for example, if you're a coordinator for a state or a local meeting, you're not the presenter, but you're gathering the information. So the EVP program developer should be able to complete the application questions, for example, identifying a needs analysis or why a program is needed, why it's important for ATs to get the information, et cetera. And they're the ones who know the objectives of their program or their presentation. The feedback that we receive is that the program developers or speakers can generally complete the application in a short period of time. Now, we do have resources on our website to help providers understand the process and the application. And most importantly, we encourage providers who have questions to contact our office. We have dedicated staff, all certified ATs, that are standing by here to help you with this process.
Our next question is, can master's-level courses in research methodology or other college courses be counted as EVP?
The short answer is yes. At this time, there are three college courses that have been submitted for EBPCU credit. EVP courses must be approved before you take a course, and providers, not the ATs, have to submit the EVP program for review. So this is the responsibility of the provider. And any provider that wants to offer EVP category CE programming will complete the EVP application. And again, details for the providers can be found on the Approved Provider section of our website.
Our next question is, do online EVP courses have the same value for time spent as hands-on EVP courses?
Sure. Online EVP courses are also assigned CEUs, and each course is approved for the appropriate amount of CEs according to the contact hours for that online course.
Our next question is, why are we holding this webinar in the middle of a workday?
Well, we chose the time in hopes that ATs could listen in over lunch breaks. But we know that with all the time zones, not everybody's going to be on lunch break, and a Friday might not be the best time to get active participation. But we're also recording the webinar, and we're going to post it to the website for those that can't join us today. And the questions are all submitted in advance, so at least you know that when your question is submitted and that we're recording it, you will be able to listen to the answer when you have the time.
Our next question is, how does the Mayo Clinic in Rochester possibly get all 11 hours of EVP approved, and those seminars in the Twin Cities can hardly get one to two hours approved?
This is a specific question, and it's probably difficult to answer in this format, but we'd encourage you to contact us here in Omaha with more information. But it could be that the Twin Cities may not have submitted or requested 11 hours of EVP. It really depends on what the provider submits in the application.
After an EVP course expires, can the provider use their original verbiage and update with current research-based info?
So expired EVP programs will need to So expired EBP programs will need to submit a new application and then update the program based on any new evidence. And Kelly, can you tell everybody how long a program is granted not expired status?
Yeah, and it depends on the program a little bit, too. Our foundational programs will last a total of five years until expiration, due to the fact that foundational programs are kind of the who, what, when, where, and why of EBP. So that research and information doesn't expire as quickly as a clinical application would. A clinical application does expire after two years. Again, if you have questions about either one of the application processes or how to renew or how to apply, definitely let us know, and we'll help you through it.
And that information about, you know, when the program is approved and expiration, all that information's available on our website on that listing I told you about under the hyperlink EBPCU's, under the Maintain Certification tab on our website.
Our final question today is, what criteria does a course need to meet to be considered an EBP course?
Okay, so the application process requires the applicant to demonstrate that the proposal meets specific content and quality requirements. These requirements are intended to facilitate the type of presentation that's best able to contribute to clinical practice in an evidence-based way. So the demonstration of these requirements is necessary for a successful application and then subsequent approval for EBP category CEU. So if you look at the application, you understand the criteria that's needed, and the majority of those criterias for the presenters are going to be in the C appendix, correct, Kelly?
Yeah, and some of, just an example question that would be in the application, we ask for what the gap is in our literature and our practice, and saying, what are athletic trainers missing? What do they need to do to fix their practice and make clinical outcomes the best for the patient? It's kind of the process of the application. We go through and make sure that the faculty that are presenting your courses are qualified, that there's correct research being implemented into your programs. So again, right like we've said before, feel free to pull up the application and look through it, but if there are specific questions about it, to let us know. So this concludes our Town Hall meeting today. Thank you for joining us. We hope you enjoyed today's discussion. Our next Town Hall call will be September 25th. It's a Friday, and will be at 11:00 a.m. We will discuss common reporting and continuing education mistakes. Again, this call will be posted on our website, so please share this information with your colleagues. There is a lot of misinformation out there, so we remind you, if you don't find it on the BOC website or hear it from a BOC staff member, the information may be correct. May not be correct, sorry. Please give us a call so we can help you. If you have further questions, also can email us at CE@BOCATC.org, and a BOC team member will personally assist you. Thank you for joining us today.
Thanks, everyone. Please don't hesitate to give us a call. We're here because of you and for you. Have a great rest of your weekend.